I got two of them, so take mine. Okay, we'll get started. Welcome to the Arundel Planning Board and run through the agenda, which is, first we'll do the approval of the agenda and approval of minutes. Public hearing, we have three of them, Trolley Museum, the conditional use application, and the proposed amendment to the land use ordinance. And then another proposed amendment to the land use ordinance. After that, we have Bentley Business, which is a change. If you were expecting Bentley's campground or Finkel Pod Farm, neither one of them will be here tonight. They asked for an extension or delay till next time. So we have Seashore Trolley Museum and both of those proposed amendments. So start out with motion to approve the agenda. Well, call.
Aye.
Jamie Law?
Tom McGinn.
Dr. Moore.
John Decker.
Tab Redway.
Thank you, Roger.
And approval of the agenda?
I'll move to approve with the changes that you mentioned, that Bentley's and Finkel Pod will be postponed until the next meeting.
Okay.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor? All in the air, so then approval of the minutes.
Early night tonight.
Huh?
Early night tonight.
Yeah, we'll keep it right through this quick. We have two sets of minutes. And I was not here giving.
April 21st to April 22nd.
Yeah, so it's April 21st. We do that one first.
Yeah, I'll move to approve April 21st.
Okay. Second one yet?
Yeah.
That's the second. Any discussion? Those of you who are here, all in favor? And both, the April 28th minutes. Same one, present. About those?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll move to approve the 28th.
Second. And the second, any discussion? All in favor?
Yeah.
Okay, unanimous? Okay. So now we'll jump into public hearing. We'll open the public hearing at 7:08. And we'll start with the Seashore Trolley Museum. We will be going over these more and doing more review in detail. But this is for the public. Is anybody here from the public for the Seashore Trolley Museum? And some eventing. Okay. And we're going to.
We have to close the public hearing.
You have to do each one separate?
Yes.
So we'll close that one. And we'll open the second one, which is proposed amendment. This is for amendment to land use table to designate public facilities as permitted uses in the R1, R2, R3, R4, NRC districts. The conditional use in the shoreland districts. Is there anybody here for that in the public? Okay. Got a group tonight. So hearing done, we will close that public hearing and open the third one, which is to amend section 86F of the land use ordinance to increase the maximum size for home occupation sign from four square feet to eight square feet. Okay. Now you were right, this will be quick. Okay, so we close that.
Okay.
All right, now we'll move to the conditional use application of the Seashore Trolley Museum. Read through. It proposes to expand the Fairview Trolley Storage Barn an additional 9,992 square feet on a 40.9 acre site located at 195 Block Cavan Road, tax map 31, block 12 and 13 within the off-ree and shoreline overlay zone. Seashore Trolley Museum is the owner and app, and Tony Panchioko, did I get that right? Yes, correct. Well, okay. Of SMRT is the app contagion. So, you know, you've gone in and we're ready to move on this, present.
It looks like.
This is. Move to second, please.
Thank you. Again, going against our vice of attorney on behalf of Seashore Trolley Museum. We were here probably exactly a month ago, I think. Went through the plans and the layout. There were some comments that we had received from Mr. Redway regarding the plan. I think we addressed all those. One was we had this outlet at the steepest point of the hill. We rotated that down to a flatter point somewhere in here. We also, I think we had talked about why this was pulled back away from the stream. We had to maintain a 25-foot stream setback for DEP. Also, we're inside the 75-foot setback, but we're outside the 25, so between 25 and 50 is a term of life rule, which we have not filed yet. But pending approval, we'll submit that for the discharge of the outlet pipe. We also added a note, there was some discussion regarding whether repairs were done in the Fairview Barn on any of the tunnels or buses. And applicant stated that they don't do any repairs in that barn. We added a note to be saying that the Fairview Car House is intended to be used for vehicle storage only, no restoration activities to be performed inside the Fairview Car House. As part of the update. One of the other, a couple of the minor comments for cleanouts in the underground that we've added, we added detail for those cleanouts for construction purposes. Okay. One more. Oh, the other question was what happens to the runoff of this side of the new addition? This plan doesn't reflect it, but I do have, if you want to see it, a plan that shows the new topo out there that directs that to the existing detention basin that everyone, I think, saw during the sidewalk. So I think we addressed the comments. I'd be happy to ask, insert any additional questions the board of town planning may have.
Do we have the detail of that topo, please? Or I think I saw more inside?
Uh-huh. So this was built years ago as part of the site location permit, but as you can see, it is the Fairview Barn. It was an existing drainage way that runs along the side of the sepalbert. And you could gravel load it, the next one onto the, into the existing basin.
I think our planner has one question about erosion of the, just out at this outlet, right?
Yeah.
Possible erosion. Have you addressed that?
Yes, what we did, this discussion was, was that where the outlet was previously shown, was at the steepest part of the slope, which is right here, which made a lot of sense. The comment did, not where the outlet was. So what we've done is we rotated it to an area where it's going to discharge to a flatter portion of the bank, not the bank, but of the slope leading to the stream, so that it will prevent erosion at the steep slope. We also have riprap outlet there to stop the water, to slow the water down before it discharges into the.
Maybe Mr. Redway can address that, but in his notes, he seemed to have some continued concerns about erosion possibilities.
I'm pretty satisfied because it's going to be basically, as the detail shows, it's almost like lava spreader. It's going to come out onto a splashback, riprap splashback, and then go into the existing gradient. Maybe it's the existing gradient as well, 3%. I didn't do that. It's less than, less than 2%.
Okay, so you don't have a.
No, velocity coming out of it is going to be less than 2 feet per second. 2 feet per second is the sky.
As I read your notes, it seemed like you did have some concerns.
No, I'm good. Actually, the, I have to commit to SMRT because they addressed every single issue that we brought up at the last meeting. And did a good design of a few details, and I think, I think this, I'm very pleased with the project. I think that all the boards, all my concerns were met, unless the board, right? They've answered all the honored questions. I'm all set. Yep. Any other questions? Okay. All right, well, hearing no questions, we're ready to move forward to the findings of fact. I don't see why not, yeah. All right, so I'm going to run through, do you have a copy of that finding of fact? Do you have next copy for that?
No, I'll give it to him, I'll give him that. That would be approved.
Okay. Right. Well, I'm going to read through this.
One of the signs on it.
Three pages. All right, okay, so whereas on July 23rd, 2015, the Arundel Planning Board received the conditional use pre-application from Seashore Trolley Museum to expand the Fairview Trolley Storage Barn an additional 9,992 square feet on a 40.9 acre site located at 195 Block Cavan Road, tax map 31, block 12 and 13, within the R3 and shoreline overlay zone. Whereas on August 13th, 2015, the planning board conducted an advertised public sidewalk on the premises. Whereas upon examining the site, the planning board advised the applicant that they would have to map the shoreline overlay district as well as a major tributary stream on the property in order to establish compliance with shoreline setback requirements. Whereas on April 14th, 2016, the applicant submitted a conditional use application for proposed activity, which the planning board deemed complete, subject to several revisions. Whereas on May 12th, it's 8/2016, the Arundel Planning Board conducted a public hearing on the proposed project in conformance with section 9F1 of the Arundel Land Use Ordinance. Therefore, the Arundel Planning Board has arrived at the following findings of fact. Findings of fact number one, the applicant and the owner of the property, Seacoast Trolley Museum, expressed the last part of the sentence. The property is located at 195 Block Cavan Road, tax map 31, block 12 and 13, within the R3 and shoreline overlay district. Three, the applicant proposed to enclose the south side of the existing Fairview Trolley Storage Barn, thereby expanding the footprint of the building by an additional 9,992 square feet. Number four, the proposed expansion will be located outside of the 250-foot setback from Gotham Mill Brook shoreline overlay district, and outside of the 50-foot DEP setback limits and the 100-foot setback from stream protection district associated with the unnamed tributaries adjacent to the Fairview Barn site. Number five, the proposed building expansion meets all space and bulk requirements of the R3 district. Six, the proposed building expansion will be unheated and will be used exclusively for storage of rail vehicles, no actual restoration activities, or the storage and use of paint or solvents will occur in the proposed building. Number seven, vehicular ingress and egress to and from the expanded Fairview Trolley Storage Barn will be via the existing and upgraded rail tracks proceeding from the east. Eight, to accommodate runoff from the roof of the building expansion, the applicant proposed to install a 277-foot long drip strip at the roof drip line along the south side of the building, which will then discharge into the unnamed tributary stream, Sway, via a riprap spreader. Storm drainage from the northern side of the roof line will be directed into the existing detention basin, serving the remainder of the facility. Stormwater calculations indicate no net increase in peak runoff rates due to the proposed project. Number nine, the proposed project will not generate any additional vehicular traffic requiring parking facilities and will not impact peak hour turn movements at the museum entrance on Block Cavan Road. Ten, no additions to the facility, solid waste stream will be generated by the proposed building expansion. Eleven, the Arundel Fire Chief has approved the proposed site development activities. Twelve? Yes.
Question. Did we receive something from the chief?
I received a verbal. I received a verbal from them, I did not receive a word.
And we.
There's an email to the package.
There is an email.
So that we have it for.
It is an email, it isn't on letterhead, but it is an email from the chief. There's a record of it. Great. There's a record on it in your application. Yeah, well, we stopped, I've had another question. Okay. Ted, can you elaborate on item number four? I was going to wait to the end. So it says the expansion is located outside the 250 setback from Gotham Mill, but it appears on the plan that the 250, at least in the portion of the unnamed tributary.
The unnamed tributary isn't in the Gotham Mill.
Right.
Right.
And so that doesn't have a 250 associated with it?
No, it has 100 at the very, at the very greatest it would have, the 100.
Okay, so the line on the plan just is a little confusing, but that, that is what it is.
DP is 75.
Right, oh yeah, no, I get it.
But you're well outside of all those, all those setbacks.
Definitely.
Definitely all. Yeah, but we're really concerned about the, you know, this. And the problem is, remember, the problem was originally when we were saying, what's the status of the, I mean, unnamed tributary? That's why we need to go out and mark out there, take a look at that. But they need all the, they need, they're outside of the setbacks, all the setbacks, except for, you know.
Right. But just where we have in the findings of fact that it says it's located outside of the 250, even if things are allowed within the 250, is it, is it accurate to have that in the findings of fact?
The site isn't outside of it.
It just complies with the setbacks.
Right, well, I'm not, I'm not taking, taking any issue with, with the building, and I just want to make sure if it's, if, the way it's shown on the plan, it looks like part of it is within that.
The requirement is that the, that it has to be the 100-foot setback, it cannot be the 100-foot setback.
Right.
Most of the buildings not in the.
And I'm not taking any issue with anything like that.
Then let's.
What, I just don't want to, I want to make sure that the findings of fact don't say anything that is not factual.
To make it a little easier, we could just say 100-foot setback from Gotham Mill shoreline, from Gotham Mill Brook.
Yeah.
Leave it at that one.
Yeah. Okay, good.
That would make it feel more comfortable.
Anybody else agree with that? Okay. Number 12 is the, a soil erosion control plan has been submitted that meets the standards of the Arundel Land Use Ordinance. If you can confirm all of that, that it's a, that meets. The existence of a 200-foot natural vegetative buffer precludes the requirement for any landscape buffering to adjacent properties. 13, record plans submitted as part of the conditional use application included plan set prepared by SMRT, appropriate name, and dated March 17th, 2016, with revisions to April 15th, 2016, and stamped May 2nd, 2016. All plans and set are made part of this motion of approval. So the conformance with conditional use criteria follows that after due review and consideration, the Arundel Planning Board has determined the application to be in conformance with criteria of section 9.7H of the Arundel Land Use Ordinance as follows. 9.7H1, that the use is compatible with and similar to the general categories of uses of neighborhood properties, the building is in similar size and scale with surrounding equipment storage facilities on the 40-plus acre museum property, and is not visible from other properties in the neighborhood. Move to approve. Second act. Any question on that? If there are none, all in favor?
Yeah.
All in favor? 9.7H2, use is consistent with comprehensive plan and the anticipated future development of the neighborhood in that the museum use is in conformance with the 2015 Arundel Comprehensive Plan for the R3 district. Prove to approve.
Second.
Motion in the second, any discussion? All in favor?
Yeah.
Unanimous. 9.7H3, that there is adequate and safe pedestrian and vehicular access to and into the site to accommodate anticipated traffic to and from the use. The proposed use will not generate additional vehicular off-site trips. The proposed building expansion will not be open to the general public and therefore will not increase the number of pedestrian visitors, nor pose hazardous pedestrian movements on the site. Motion? Move to approve.
Second.
All, yeah, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
What, you guys?
No, no.
Discussion or?
No, I was voting in favor.
No, sorry.
That's all right. So, okay, all in favor of that? Okay. 9.7H4, that there's adequate water supply and sewage disposal available to serve the use. The proposal, the proposed use will not require water or sewage service. Move to approve. Second. Discussion in favor? 9.7H5, that there will be no noise, dust, odor, vibration, or smoke generated by the use that will adversely affect neighboring properties in that the building expansion is intended to provide only covered storage for existing equipment and museum rail cars. The only noise or exhaust generated will occur when rail vehicles are moved in and out of the structure. The board has determined that the infrequency of these activities will not have a delterious impact on the neighborhood. Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? 9.7H6, that the physical characteristic of the site, including location, slope, soils, drainage, and vegetated cover are suitable for the proposed use, and that the site has already been cleared, that it's, it's already been cleared and developed, and the proposed expansion will minimally disturb existing topography, soils, and vegetation of the site. The stormwater management strategy will dispose of runoff in the manner that will retain soil stability and will not increase peak runoff discharges. Any motion on that?
Now, we've got to change the word, retain to retain.
We got it. And you have re, and the. Okay. Good. Got that? Do we have motion? Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a discussion. They all in favor? Unanimous. 9.7H7, that the use will not constitute a public or private nuisance, and that no additional nuisances will be generated by the proposed use. Move to approve. Second. Any discussion? All in favor? And 9.7H8, that all other requirements and applicable provisions of the ordinance, particularly any pertinent performance standards, are met, and that the applicant has met all pertinent sections of the Arundel Land Use Ordinance in the design of the proposed activities. Move to approve. Okay, second? Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay. Therefore, be resolved that based on the above findings and conclusions of the Arundel Planning Board, the, the planning board hereby approves the conditional use application of Seashore Trolley Museum to expand the Fairview Trolley Storage Barn from additional 9,992 square feet on a 40.9 acre site located at 195 Block Cavan Road, tax map 31, block 12 and 13, within the R3 and shoreline overlay district, subject to the following conditions. The first being that no disturbance of soil on the site shall occur until all soil and erosion control measures specified in the Soil Control Plan of the approved plans are installed. And the two, no certificate of occupancy shall be issued for the renovated and expanded building until a sealed letter is presented by the code enforcement officer and town planner by SMRT certifying that all improvements have been installed in accordance to the approved plans.
I have a guess.
Sorry.
With the condition.
Okay.
So if you want to finish with the conditions, but I'll work on that.
Okay. We'll, I'll go to number three then. All site improvements approved in this planning board action shall be substantially completed within two years of this approved date. Otherwise, the approval shall be deemed null and void. And number four, any changes from the approved plan shall require submission of revised plans to the board. For John, you had.
Well, yes, my concern with condition number two is that the way it's written, they will not be able to use the existing barn for storage during the renovation process, and that could be problematic. I would, I would agree that no certificate of occupancy for the expanded portion is granted, but we can't take away that storage that they have now just because they're expanding it.
So should we pull out the word renovated or keep expanded?
Well, no. See, it says for the renovated and expanded building, that includes the entire barn.
Yeah.
So I'm concerned with that. They should be able to use the existing barn, just not the expanded portion until the, we have a sealed letter.
That was the intent, so we can remove renovated and just the building expansion.
Instead of wanting the expanded portion.
Yeah.
So it would read how to, just.
Just remove renovated and, and just for the expanded building until.
No renovated, expanded building.
No, it would be no certificate of occupancy shall be issued for the expanded building until sealed letters presented.
Well, it's.
Yeah.
Building expansion. Yeah, building expansion, that I, that I would agree with.
Okay, good. Got acceptable to? Just, we want you to be able to use the portion that's already there, and then.
Yeah, basically.
Yeah, so, so John, you put that.
The two-year horizon affirmed?
Yeah.
Number.
Ah, it always has been.
Yeah. Well, history cycle.
Well, you could apply for an extension if you have a problem meeting it.
What were you thinking?
I would hope it's less than two years.
Right. What were you two, what were you thinking?
Well, the ability to file an extension, I think, is comforting just in case.
Well, this is.
Hopefully, if I'm asking a question, I can do that. Well, it, it, just so you know, we have, have granted extensions many times, so, yeah, hopefully it'll get done, but some gets in the way, finance or weather or whatever. You might have.
Does that have to be about a one-time extension or will that be done multiple times? Is that a two-year extension or just a one?
Definitely.
Um, actually, it's anything the board wants, because usually the two-year that we use against the site plans not necessarily is applied to the shoulders. So it'd be any time period that you want to put on it.
So this, this doesn't have to be two years?
No, it doesn't have to be.
So if you have some concerns, maybe we could put that at three years, and then you still have an option for an extension.
If you still get signed, so, you want it.
How much time do you think it's going to take?
About six months, right?
There's fundraising involved, right?
I would hope less, as I said, but before we even can begin construction, we have to remove four constructions, some existing tracks and other things, so, there are variables. And anytime they're variables, I would like to know what the, the, as mentioned, funding. So I believe in the ordinance, it has a two-year window for them to, well, I'm in.
In section 867, 97 or 98?
No, well, I'm in, I'm looking at the, the marked up version.
Oh, the new one.
So, but I.
The one that doesn't exist.
Well, I know, but isn't, isn't that substantively the same?
Um, what we did in that one is we combined, we put the, I don't have that one, so we can't, I can't look, I'm looking in.
Yeah.
We have to go by what we.
Well, we've got to go by what we have, but this is.
Well, we've got it, and what we did is we combined them there.
So I was thinking the substance of it would have been the same.
Yeah, but actually, in our current. Yeah, but actually, in our current ordinance, there is no time limit on conditionals.
Okay.
Okay, so it's whatever you guys, if you want to take that off, you can. You've been putting it on just to make sure people do their projects.
Well, I think it should be there, but I wouldn't be in favor of moving it to three years.
Three years.
Okay. Okay, you can do that?
Okay. Unless we, unless you.
Expansion.
Three, three years works for you? Okay. Okay, anything else on that? Okay, so.
So I'll make a motion that we approve this application with the conditions as we revise them.
Okay.
Second.
Second. Any other discussion? Just the, the only revisions I thought was the setback.
And also that happened to be noted on the, on the lay of the charges.
Right, that was the findings of fact that you're talking about. I was talking about the conditions, but the findings of fact have some, some minor revisions, but I was mostly concerned with the conditions.
The conditions being that we, there'll be the certificate of occupancy for the building expansion.
Right.
And then the three years instead of two years.
Right.
And the rest. Okay.
No, also two, we generally use that one with the two hundred.
Yeah.
That also be noted. But with clarity.
Okay. That's one that defined the fact. Okay, all right, so that was your motion? Okay, you have a second? Second on there? Any other discussion for anybody? Okay, here and none? All in favor? None opposed? Good. Congratulations. Thank you.
So maybe I need mylar set here for signing, one mylar for me, one for the client if he wants one. I need a paper.
These issues are approved.
You want to put all this on that plan?
No, just the condition.
Those are the ones?
Yeah.
For mylar.
All those in the name.
Okay. And we'll check this out, make the amendments, and then we'll put it through. Great, thought we wanted, but it depends what someone wants for, you probably want a mylar set for your record or a paper set.
Get your paper and PDFs.
Okay, PDFs. I like the PDFs. I like to come along to.
Thank you. Congratulations. Good luck.
Another one.
Yeah. Another one. Okay, so we'll move on to the next item.
Oh, by the way. Bentley's is not going to be here tonight if that's why you're here.
How?
Okay.
Couldn't stay away. All right, so we will move on to the first proposed amendment to land use ordinance, which is to amend, usually the one I was considering, so. The new table to designate public facilities that are permitted in the R one, R two, R three, R four, and NRC district, and is conditional in the Shoreland district. Okay, so this is. This is the way the warrant's written. So what you need to do in this is you need to refer this, make a vote to refer this to the selectman for inclusion in the. Okay. So no change from what we've been discussing that this is.
If you make a change, we have to have another public hearing.
Okay.
After fourteen days of notification.
Okay. Right, any, any question on this?
Yeah, you have one question. And was the selectman who brought this forward to us to have this changed?
The town manager.
Town manager asked me this.
Basically.
On behalf of the selectman, I'm sure.
And as it read before, public, we were allowed to have those, public facilities is speaking of what terminology?
As it's defined in the, in the zone, that's what I'm saying. We're not making, this is the same as it always has been. If that does initiate?
I have right here, any facility, including but not limited to buildings, property, recreation areas, and roads which are owned, leased, or otherwise operated or funded by a government body or public entity. The purpose of this ordinance, a public facility, shall be treated in the same manner as a privately-owned facility of a similar nature.
Yes.
Which is different than public utility.
Utility. What I'm saying is municipal, we have the word municipal use. Now, is municipal use?
We don't have municipal, we have public facility. We changed every place where we had municipal use in all of the business districts, we changed to, to public facility, so we'd be, we would be in lockstep with the current, current definition.
Good. I'm so, on the terminology, public facility, okay, and municipal facility, okay, are generally speaking of two different entities. Public meaning turn on, yes, it's open to the public, but usually a public facility is also turned up privately-owned by an entity, corporation, or a person. Municipality would be turned out owned strictly by the town. That's where I'm going at my question and definition.
Well, this is anything that's owned, leased, or otherwise operated or funded by a governmental body or public entity. Governmental body includes municipality, includes the state of Maine.
Includes school.
No, schools are separately defined.
Public facility.
Yes, but we have, well, no, because it's not governmental, school is a separate district, it's not a governmental entity. Besides, we have a definition of a school.
Okay.
And we wouldn't have been able to even do the Milver Day, Milver Day School expansion if we, if it had been classified as a public facility, because it's not permitted in this district, either as conditional or as a condition, permitted use. And whereas a school is in fact permitted as a conditional use in the R two district. So that's why this facility won't have, otherwise it wouldn't have been.
I, I was gonna buy my tongue, but I won't, that it almost wouldn't have been allowed, but somehow it was allowed by.
Manipulation.
Yeah. Marty, I, I agree that we ought to look at this term because it can be somewhat confusing. I agree with your reservation, right now it's in the ordinance, but I, I think that's something we should follow up on.
I mean, you know.
Right.
That's why I, that's why I asked the question. Public facility, okay, if you have somebody who's going to have an intervention set, it's a public facility, okay?
It's got to be owned by the public.
Well, yeah, but it can be confusing the way it's, it's applied in normal, everyday language. I, I think we should look at it, but I don't think that's going to make a difference as far as the smaller is concerned right now, because it's already in our ordinance, so.
Can you live with that?
I know.
Well, I, I can, I can understand the, what you're saying too, because it does seem like it's public meaning.
Where we have to make everything else so clarity that everything else, you know, gets swept under the.
Alongside this.
You ask me if I can live with it, that was my comment, no.
Well, that, that definition, public facility, has been in ninety-five. Ninety-five, forty, okay. So I, I never really noticed the way.
Well, that's why we could put the, the public works garage where it bugs and the fire station.
That public works garage is there before ninety-five.
Well, this.
Yes.
So not for form use, we can't expand.
Well, in, in, as far as the concept, allowing the town or the state to, to build in all these districts, that's what we're looking at here.
So we put parks that include athletic fields, anything like that. Which way can we put them? Technical, all those other ones. Why the manager and the selectman would ask for this to happen?
I move that we refer the language regarding amendment to the rental land use to allow for the public facilities in the R one, R two, R three, R four, NRC, and Shoreland districts to the selectmen. Okay, that's a motion?
One second.
Second. I, I do have a question. It's been permitted in those five zones to be conditional in three more, all the rest will not be?
No, they already are in all the business zones. Oh, facilities are already, you already took care of that in all the business zones.
Okay.
That's why they're not in here.
Without saying, I, I didn't know what they were, okay. So they already are. But so this would be everywhere. Okay, any other discussion? Here and none? All in favor? Reposed? One opposed? All right. And the next one is, we, the formal, also to amend sections eight point six F of the land use ordinance to increase the maximum size for home occupation sign from four square feet to eight square feet.
And the reason for that was there was a conflict in the current ordinance that was mentioned as vote four eight, and code enforcement officer had a difficult time deciding which to use, so.
Again, have a problem, it just always picks the less, the more restrictive of the two.
So this is just to make it consistent.
Okay.
And we discussed this at our previous meeting.
Uh, what, two weeks ago?
Longer than that.
Longer than that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Forgotten.
Is that the fire station?
Yeah.
Five.
How do we do that?
I'll move to refer this to the selectman for the wire.
Well, Marty did first.
Oh, Marty did? Okay, sorry.
So John, you're going to second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay, all right, discussion. I'd say I am completely opposed to this.
You weren't here.
Well, I can say this.
I know, but you.
Are you opposed to the size?
Yeah. Because it's been four, it's been four square feet for decades, and, and just because there was a little discrepancy, all of a sudden it becomes eight. It is a, these are for the residential zones that we all want to allow home occupations, people to go work in their homes, but I think a sign that fits two by two should catch the attention of someone driving by, double that size.
Well, when we discussed this at the board meeting, we had a vigorous discussion, and we went around all kinds of ways, and this is what we came up with, this is what we finally settled on, so. But we did consider all the options.
Well, I believe there was, if somebody mentioned that the, where it was posed as eight was in our most recent conversations in the signage, in the change to the signage ordinance that we just, that we just passed a year ago, something along those lines?
Yeah.
So, I mean, I supported it because that was the, the most recent conversation that we had had about it.
I think, I remember it being in there, and I think it just, there were so many different details we were, were working on, and I think that one slipped through, and I, I recall, I think just that it wasn't worth picking a fight over, a battle over, but now this is the only thing, it's on its own, and I, I wish I could have stopped it then, but it was combined with other, other things, details, that whole side ordinance that we were working on, and I just couldn't with it. And it, and I thought, well, if I ever have a chance to, I'd like to revisit that, and now here it is, so. I, I just think if the double size, I don't know if there's been a huge demand from, from the home occupancy people to have bigger signs. There might be a few who want it, and there always will be, but then what about the, the neighbors that have to then, then look at it? Or it does, it is a residential zone we're talking about, so that's how I feel. So any other discussion? Would you like to move a question, please?
Okay, all in favor? And opposed? Passes. All right, so. Well, that's, that would be it, so those will be moved to the selectmen.
We forgot to put in a place for public comments on our agenda, perhaps we should do that to both clients or.
Okay, great point. So we'll open up to if anybody has anything else that we wish to talk about? Any questions? Okay. All right. Thank you. Just want to plan this business. That's it?
Not much, not much since two weeks ago. I have several, still working with a couple of clients on, you know, looking at developing some good-sized buildings, twenty thousand square foot. Not sure, talking to another one who will be coming forward with an application for Commerce Park.
The what?
Commerce Park, which is next, that's at the corner of Route one and Portland Road and Block Cabin. It's hard engineering, has submitted a complete application. There's a few things that might not be included from where I can see, so I will be giving that to you, sending that out to you, probably Friday, or next week, I'll send that out to you next week. That's a big, thick package, what they're doing is they're doing some expansion in the back. As you recall, they were going to do a lot of expansion in the back, they'd asked for that provision, and the zoning ordinance for the D two district, that they'd be a lot of expand, they wanted to do a lot of that in the D one, D two district.
Is Commerce Park still?
No, I'm talking about the magnetic storage.
Oh, magnetic storage, okay.
Hard engineering, magnetic storage. So they've got some, they've, they were scuttled by the, by the infernal pool the Altrick found in the back of the strip. But they have found some areas which they can potentially develop, and they have a DEP permit, they actually have asked, they've acquired some of their NRPA permit, and they're, I think they're going to have to do some order to, it looks like they're going to, they're going to be just forty thousand square foot, they're going to go over this stuff. So, but they've submitted an application, that'll be on the agenda for next time. Drive that meeting with, with people rental this morning, that went very smoothly, put this more money into the escrow. What we have there is also, they're going to be moving into phase three and into putting in the connected road to Kid Meadows. Actually, they need to do that because they need to balance their kind of fill. They're also looking at, remember the, the section where they're going to put a recreational facility that was something they've parceled but was not purchased, well, they purchased that parcel and they weren't going to, but they're debating whether it's going to be three or four.
That's way up.
It's way up, that's across from the community, so. So that's, they're looking to put a three to four eight upon in there, and eventually they'll be coming back to us and looking for expansion of, putting units around, and that'll be an expansion of the project. But right now they want to do a pond, and I believe the last, when I brought this up, guys, the board said that it was okay for staff to look at that, it's that size.
Right.
Question is, you, you want me to do it, or you want, do you want to do it here before?
I think if it's that size, we should look at it.
Okay.
That's my opinion.
Three to four eight, three.
Three to four eight, that's pretty good.
So that the, they have, they have enough septic capacity to, to the area, like build that, enough capacity to do an expansion? Because that'll all be feeding into that same system.
They, they do, they do have enough capacity.
What's the status of the condo docks?
They're almost done.
Almost done.
Well, they're done. Aaron's already gone over some portions of these.
Right, but they don't have the CL yet, right? But they don't have a CL yet, right?
No, they have a CL, okay, those in the next week.
So they're, they're sure for using it if the...
Absolutely, they've got their, their signs up, you can see, anybody have noticed that? Signs up, great. Signs up, then, media center's almost done. They're putting siding on this week, next, yeah, next week. And they're putting together their dogs for the blasting, for phase three, because they have to do site, site prep for phase three.
Moving right along, that's good.
Yeah, they are moving right along, and they, they plan to... I still don't have their application for the squarish on the inside. I do still have some questions, and we'll bring it up. We won't talk about it much now, because there may be a discussion. But we do have storage issues, which I think we have addressed.
We've had those from the beginning.
Yeah, and I think we have to bring it out to the panel, we can eliminate those two, two storage facilities. We were questioning, where are from those kayaks? And frankly speaking, where are the, where are all the small trucks going? Because I went to buy the water door facility, and that is all outdoors. Unless I wanted to truck all the way to Watergate store, I would have just obviously taken out what they have. But, you know, I think we have to, we have to discuss that, because they still want to put up those sheds, and we don't, we don't have permission for those sheds, so that's a discussion I think we should do with our application. Otherwise, things, things go wrong.
How many units do they have ready to go?
They have pulled thirty building permits.
Those permits, they're, they're separate from the regular residential permits that we issued?
Yes, they're exempt from the residential permits, because this is not a residential unit, it's a lodging facility. Probably no, no impact upon the schools, the other facilities, because they take care of everything else in-house. Except for ambulances and the ambulance, if I had an ambulance and that's...
That was a question we had, I forget which previous meeting, but in terms of the number of permits that are allowed at this point, has that been recalculated?
I still am getting, I still am waiting through some figures for general. Because the problem is with huge amount of renovations, and what constitutes new, just renovations is still sort of, actually, yes, sort of. Yeah, I think that's numbers, because we have to make a decision for that. But we're not gonna hit forty-four, let's put it that way.
Forty-four? I thought our old number was forty, it didn't go up, it should have gone down.
Oh, okay, that was... Well, I haven't gone down.
I'm just saying.
They haven't adjusted it since, since the, since the last time we did that.
Because when we adjusted it last time, it went down.
Yeah, it should go down drastically, they just haven't recalculated it. Right. It might go up drastically.
No. Over the last three years.
Yeah, but this year might lower it.
But it's the average of the last three years.
Yeah, it's the average last.
So is that, is that done annually?
It's supposed to be.
It's supposed to be.
Yeah. Because if you want to lower it, just the window right now, because it is gonna be going up from...
Yeah, that's supposed to be new construction.
Don't hold your ground.
That's supposed to be new construction, right?
That economy is all spoken mirrors.
But compared to the last few years, there was no building going on for a few years, so... Okay.
But that was supposed to be, that was supposed to be new construction, not renovation.
Right, right, that's apparently what Jim's sorting through, right? Okay, any signing that we have to do tonight?
No, because I don't have any my list. You, we finished all the signing last time.
In that case, I move to the general.
I'll second that first.
All in favor?
At eight o'clock.
Wow, you did.
I thought you guys were gonna actually want to extend this meeting. So I'm asking all these questions, I go, wow, we gotta go to nine?
Would you read it again? How'd you make up yet? Remember you were talking about the idea of...
You're gonna have a good night.
All right.